It's seven o'clock and I'll call to order the December the thirteenth, 2016 Board of Supervisors meeting to order, and we do have a quorum. And we have Pastor Mike Kingo from Greper Valley Pentecost Home and its Church. He'll do our invocation tonight. And I will ask everybody to stand and please remain standing for our pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me say I admire you guys for continuing to do this. We certainly appreciate it in the evangelical community. Thank you, guys. Let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Lord, we thank you tonight. We thank you for this board. We thank you for this county leadership. Now we just ask your blessings upon them and upon their families. And Lord, now we invoke your presence in this meeting this evening. We ask that you guide in the regnum in all the business that would be transacted, that the citizens may benefit, and that you somehow may be glorified. And we give this thanks and ask these things in the name of thy son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome everyone tonight. Before, I'm going to amend the agenda a little bit because some people's got some other things to do and places to go. We've got some resolutions to present. And the first resolution, the first resolution I'm going to present. And I would request the company of Mr. Danny B. Gordon to join me up here. Danny, the With County Board, the With County Resolution 2016-26, a resolution honoring Danny B. Gordon on his retirement. Whereas Daniel B. Gordon began his career at WYBE in 1984, and whereas Mr. Gordon has enjoyed a long and distinguished career in journalism and radio, and whereas he is known by thousands of listeners simply by Danny G., and has served as an exemplary representative of our community, both home and abroad. And whereas Danny B. Gordon has been the voice of the county high school athletic team, demonstrating an unquestionable love and pride in our local, in our locality. And whereas Mr. Danny, Mr. Danny B. Gordon has served a critical role in broadcasting life-saving information to the citizens of With County, and whereas he has won every small market radio award for five consecutive years. And whereas Mr. Gordon has served on numerous civic and governmental boards and authorities, including the With, Withful, Withland Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors, and the With Joint Industrial Development Authority. Therefore, be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors express its gratitude and appreciation to Daniel B. Gordon's service to our community. Be it further resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors and all county employees desire to make it known their best wishes to Mr. Gordon for a long and happy retirement. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this thirteenth day of December 2016. Board members can have a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Gordon.
Would you like to say a few words?
I want to thank you, thank you for all the patience with me over the years. And of course, I've been coming to Board of Supervisors since 1980, so it covers 36 years. A lot of faces have come and gone, some have deceased, and others have chose other avenues. But it's been interesting, always interesting, Board of Supervisors, and I appreciate each and every one of you in coming on my show. To my knowledge, I think everybody sitting there has been on my show at one time. Mr. Hausman maybe more than others, Mr. Reeves missed a hell of late. But I appreciate your openness in the county and especially your support for With County schools, law enforcement, and our rescue squads and fire departments. And the only thing that I'm keeping that I haven't stepped down from is I remain chair of the With County Rescue Squad, and we appreciate all your help because it's still a constant battle, as I'm sure all these EMS folks will tell you. But thanks again. I don't mean to ruin, but I've got to go to a retreat. They decided they would like to give me something like this. So I figured I'd better get there. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And now, Mr. Willis has a presentation to make, too.
Coach Beamer and Mr. James, if you all will come up. They give me the big print for it because I can't see. Whereas the George Wood High School golf team completed a spectacular 2016 season. And whereas the George Wood High School golf team advanced to the Virginia High School League's Group 1A State Championship and aired a joke stop course in Harrisonburg on October 10th and 11th, 2016. There's a lot of where-asses. Whereas the George Wood High School golf team scored a total of 646 strokes, defeating runner-up Alta Vista by 65 strokes, the largest recorded stroke margin in Virginia High School League history. And whereas Senior Chris Booth had a two-day total of 147, Senior Max Dillon 166, freshman Channing Levens 158, freshman Grant Rosenbaum 175. And whereas Chris Booth's score of 147 earned him the honor of VHSO 1A Medalist and he rep. Whereas the George Wood High School golf team completed an exemplary season and displayed outstanding dedication, athletic ability, sportsmanship. And whereas the With County Board of Supervisors officially commend the 2016 Georgia High School Golf Team comprised of Channing Levens, Chris Booth, Dillon Booth, Max Dillon, Will James, Avery May, Zach Perdue, Grant Rosenbaum, and coaches Beamer and Southers during exemplary season, no deep rep. Now, therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors present this resolution to the George Wood High School Golf Team in recognition and appreciation of their achievements, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this thirteenth day of December 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the resolution.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is so adopted.
Coach, now can we repeat? We are going to do it.
Now we have a presentation from Mr. McRoberts and Mr. Hale.
The resolution recognizing the fortieth anniversary of the Lead Mines Rescue Squad. Whereas the Lead Mines Rescue Squad was organized and founded by concerned citizens in the Lead Mines community. And whereas the members of the Lead Mines Rescue Squad have provided self-sacrifice and service to the residents and visitors of With County for 40 years. And whereas 2016 marks the scarred fortieth year of service. Whereas the members of the organization exemplify the extraordinary spirit and selflessness found in our nation's first responders. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors recognize the organization's 40 years of service providing basic life support services and advance life support services to the people of With County. Be it further resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors wish the organization, its members, and their families the highest level of success in the years to come. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes, With County Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Check.
Check.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved.
Okay.
Okay, we have citizens' time. Ms. Myers?
Yes, gentlemen, I'd like to address this feedlot issue in Speedway once again. I've made several phone calls to try and catch up, and I was wondering what you had heard or not heard about an ongoing effort to rectify the problems we're having there.
I haven't heard nothing, Mr. Burr.
Now, unless Mr. Vaughn has heard anything after our initial visit, the changes they were making, we have not heard anything else from them. I do not know during the latest rainstorm, we did not get any conditional calls. I don't know if they still have the same problem.
Oh, yeah. Big time. Yes, yes. I've gotten many calls and so on concerning that. And the retention ponds at the bottom of the hill on St. Peter's Road is filled with manure, sediment, and so on again since that rainstorm. It was just piling off the hill. They were supposed to be doing some remediation up on top with grass and so on, and they did bulldoze once again, and they put up some hay bales, but that didn't stop the problem with the rain. So this is a continuing thing, and I'm sure those, that retention pond at the bottom of the road wasn't made specifically for that pond. So we really need to address that. Also, I had spoken to Mr. Vaughn, and he informed me because they'd been utilizing pasture on the south side, and the feedlot, huge feedlot thing was on the north side. But now they have built, what would you call them? They're not bunkers. They're some kind of feeding things, feed bunks or something like that. Anyway, building permits are supposed to be for things when they smoosh up 10,000 square feet of so on, and it is absolutely huge. And I'm sure at least 10,000 square feet of the top of this mountain has been utilized for these new feed bunkers. So this is a revenue stream for you guys that you're utilizing, although I don't want to ever penalize farmers. But this is a huge business other than the normal farming business. And if you're going to charge me $65 to put up a mailbox, this could be quite a revenue stream for the county when operations such as this are ongoing, okay? Now, we were also looking at a collaborative enforcement effort, and we have heard nothing back. We know there have been people there looking at it from Virginia Agriculture and Consumer Services and DEQ has also been there, but I haven't heard anything. So I was curious if there's paperwork being generated. We need to keep abreast of this. Since the whole of the hamlet has been, what, has been just disseminated, I'm sure property values have gone down because no real estate person is ever going to show a piece of property when you can't open a window and you've got this constant smell. And there are several houses there in the immediate area of our little hamlet that have been on the market for some time. So we need to know what kind of collaborative enforcement effort in regard to diminished property values, the related nuisances, the quality of life issues in Speedway proper that can be established. There's a Virginia Title 48 abating public nuisances, and I was wondering if the county, if there's a subtitle to that ordinance, the Virginia ordinance 48, that perhaps the county could start considering this is such a huge nuisance issue. If you could address that with your attorney, that would be really interesting. I've been in touch, and I know Mr. Darryl Marshall was out there today looking again, and he didn't come up with any answers. So we need to address this. I realize it's Christmas, but spring is going to be here in three months, and it's going to be a huge problem, and it's been ongoing for the last almost four years, and it's getting worse. And now with the bunkers on the other side of the road, does that also mean we're going to have more cattle adjacent to the hamlet of Speedway? So we don't know that. But it's certainly, the operation is growing. It's not, it's not being scaled down. It's not being removed, and the issues that we have brought up have, don't seem to be getting addressed.
Have y'all contacted DEQ?
Yes.
And what's their answer to you?
Well, they're talking about a collaborative enforcement effort, but that's as far as ever, it goes around in a circle. Everybody keeps talking to everybody else, but we don't seem to be getting anywhere. You know, they made him pull out the pipe he put, the drainage pipe, which was an illegal thing. They made him fill in a pond, and he was supposed to do other, let's call it reclamation and so on. But other than a few hay bales, nothing much has happened.
What does collaborative enforcement mean?
That's what they tell me. That's their terminology, a collaborative enforcement effort.
Collaborative enforcement effort means state agencies see how they interact, and that includes Board of Supervisors. But I do have one question for you, though somebody here's been holding out on them.
Yeah.
How would you charge you $65 to put up the mailbox?
They did. I've got the paperwork. I needed a mailbox on my, on my property, right next to my mailbox. I went to the post office and asked them. They said I had to go to the county, so I came to the county. I had to fill out paperwork, and they told me they had to come and inspect it, and it cost me $65 to put that mailbox up right next to my mailbox.
Is it a business mailbox?
It's a mailbox.
I mean, why do you have two?
I have several buildings on my property.
Why do you have two mailboxes?
Because I have a lot of organizations that I get mail for, the Liberty Confederation, the trail organizations and so on, and they wanted a mailbox separate from my household mailbox. So I said I'd put a mailbox up, and they ended up charging me $65 to put up the mailbox and to inspect the mailbox.
When was this?
I have the paperwork. I'd have to come and look.
Recently, or?
Oh, it was maybe three years ago. Truly.
I didn't know. Who are you paying it to?
Oh, With County. I've got the checks. I've got my canceled checks and stuff. Yep, to put up a mailbox, so.
I didn't know which way.
I came and bitched because Bucky Sheretz was on the board at the time, and I came, and they don't know.
Been more than three years.
Well, okay, maybe it's been more than three years ago, but whatever, okay, whatever. Still.
Seven years.
Exactly. So that was a very interesting thing.
That is interesting.
Okay, so we'd appreciate it if you would contact these agencies for us. Again, find out what their collaborative efforts are going to be. If there's a paperwork trail, we need to know that. And if there's anything that you can do through public nuisance ordinance, it's Title, Virginia Code Title 48.
We don't have anything.
Can't do anything about nuisances. We have nothing in the county about nuisances?
At the state code, we don't have a county ordinance.
For nuisances, you have nothing cooking.
Ms. Myers, twice you've been here.
Yes.
We've tried to do a nuisance ordinance for trash and stuff that got defeated once. We have one now that is sort of milquetoast, but we got one. If it was a structure, I think it could fall under that because we're very limited in what's in that ordinance, county ordinance. But, you know, we're reluctant as county ordinances. We don't have zoning. So the Board of Supervisors virtually out of this, and it is a state health problem.
Well, but we'd like you to address that to these state agencies for us. If you could write a letter, tell them that you are interested because you've got a whole lot of people. We presented you with the petitions, a whole lot of people there, and it's starting again. And the operation has not scaled down, whatever, and nothing really is being done except run a few bulldozers back and forth on the top of the mountain, which just turns everything up and makes it worse when it rains. So we'd appreciate it because I'm, I'm sure even Speedway Elementary School would love to open the windows in the spring.
Okay.
Okay.
Bill, can you drive by there and see what's changed since the last time the inspector was there?
Can you contact the guy with agriculture and see if he's been out to look at it since it's rained or maybe when it's rained?
He was there today.
Oh, was he there today? I kept me into calling, but every time I thought about it was when I went by on the bus, and then by the time I get home, I forget about it. I don't have his number, and I can't call the bus.
Oh, I've got your number.
I've got his number, but I just don't have it on my phone, and I can't call on the bus. O-H, yeah, it's O-H.
Okay, we'll move on with our agenda. Our closed citizens' time, we'll move down to minutes of the previous meeting, November 22nd, 2016. I entertain a motion to approve.
I like the motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any correction or changes need to be made to the minutes. Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 And Chair, but next item is payment of invoices.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we pay our invoices.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to pay the invoices. Any invoice, any board member has any questions or would like to pull out of the bunch? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes, pay the appointments. We do have Steve Porter for the Board of Equalizations as an alternate. I've talked to his dad, and Mr. Barr has called him tonight. He has agreed to serve. I entertain a motion to approve Steve Porter to sit on the Board of Equalizations as an alternate.
So moved.
Have a second. Second. Have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With County Rescue Squad Board hadn't heard anything with that. Planning Commission, which district?
East With, Bill. I've had somebody talk with you about Steve one time. We may have come up with somebody.
Okay, we'll take it up, up in another, and then we'll skip to an industrial development authority for the time being. Other, Mr. Barr, anything under other?
Nothing under all business, Chairman.
Okay. New business, Economic Development Committee report.
Economic Development Committee met on December 8th. Recommendations the Economic Development Committee met and recommends approval of the lane group change order of one, include three, one, two, and three for the Appalachian Expo Center. The committee approved the change order with the understanding that the additional site rating will offset future building costs.
Okay, come from committee doesn't need a second. Open a floor for a discussion or an explanation.
Well, explanation is that it's paying ahead. It's cheaper to get it done with the big equipment instead of having subcontractors in charge of it more later, but really preparing the pad site to accept the bill.
Any other questions, comments? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 No.
And the Chair votes, yes. Motion rises six to one. Does the Economic Development Committee have anything else?
No, we've got enough company that's been posted, but that's all from.
Okay, the meeting is Friday morning at eight o'clock. Okay, next item on the agenda is Robson Farmer and Cox Association contract modification. Mr. Burr, you want to?
Yes, I remember several months ago, we were presented the large refunds for abatement that the Commissioner of Revenue's Office had issued for a local Pepsi bottling company here. And basically, just before we paid this amount back, met with the auditor, reviewed it, discussed it. They would come in, do an initial review to see if they felt like there was anything that would need a more thorough review in the process. The initial cost of this assessment shall not exceed $1,000. If they need to do it more in-depth, then they'll come back and give us a proposal. They've got their hourly rates in there, but we would have to approve if they go beyond the initial amount. Also, Dr. Hausman, is there, yes, that you want to mention the Kreifer meeting?
Well, since this is a Kreifer, you know, project, you know, with Kenny, we'll initially pay, but Kreifer has, has agreed to reimburse with Kenny up to $1,000, including our part.
Including our part.
For, you know, for this, so we would certainly, you know, pay our part, but the town of With is the county queen, and we pay their part, too. So when we say $1,000, it's not $1,000 just to us.
My recommendation is to handle this and have them.
I have a recommendation from the administration to contract modification, and I have a motion.
So moved.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion. Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The Chair votes, next item is Mount Rogers Community Service Board Financial Statement. I hope everybody's had a chance to look over it, and we need to accept this. Motion to accept.
I move that we accept this financial statement.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion. Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes, next item on the agenda is the Convenience Center Holiday Schedule. Mr. Burr talked to me about this, closing the centers on Christmas Eve, on December 24th, all day. They will be open on the 26th. They'll be closed on Christmas Day. And as far as I know, it's V and L, V and, V and M. They're supposed to have all the convenience, everything emptied out on that Friday.
Their goal is to have everything, especially at our major centers, cleaned out on, on Friday. The transfer station and landfill will be closed on Saturday and Sunday, obviously, as they typically are, and both of them are closed on Monday for the Christmas holiday. So the 26th, we have to have our centers, as you know, they're going to get used heavily on the 26th. So our goal is to have it cleaned out as much as we can on the 25th and accept the trash on the 26th.
Okay.
I'll just hit it into the bargain, we're all right.
I entertain a motion to approve closing the convenience centers on the 24th of December.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion?
It makes, to me, makes sense because people try to handle it. People understand when you're closed for a holiday, they don't understand when you're closed, so. for a holiday, they don't understand when you're closed. So, I think it's much better to do it this way.
And, yeah, there's not that many people who'll come on Christmas Eve. Now, the day after Christmas, everybody will be getting rid of their.
Well, Mr. Wilson goes Grinch towns, so I don't want to do that.
And we will put advertisements. Mr. Bowers is just waiting for us to approve this. He's ready to go forward advertising. We'll get it on the radio, update our website, everything we can just to get everybody to know that we'll be closed until the twenty-fourth.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Convenience holiday, center holiday schedule approved. Twenty-seventeenth Rules of Procedure. Need Joe Irwin, this will be approved first meeting in January. And twenty-seventeen calendar will also be approved. Need to look at if you need to, any changes need to be made, be prepared on the first meeting in January to make recommendations for any calendar changes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Bower, December, I know it's a long way off. Only one meeting scheduled currently.
Correct. We either need to meet on the twenty-seventh or decide, and that's in the rules of procedure with those meetings. I assume that's because it's state holiday on the twenty-sixth. So, we can meet on the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and we'll put that in the rules of procedure and update the meeting calendar.
Okay.
The only other change is November fifteenth, we have on there for typical when we move our at the VACO conference interference with our second Tuesday meeting. And then moving the last meeting in June to June thirty as far as you're in lockdown. Those, what's shown on here is what's in the rules of procedure. Well, as we make changes to rules of procedure, we'll update the calendar.
Okay. Okay, I have one more thing. And our other, courts are our holiday schedule, the county employees' holiday schedule. The courts are closing a half a day on the twenty-second. And the county employees are scheduled to work all day that day. But I will entertain a motion to give additional half a day off on the twenty-second.
Sure, I like that motion.
Twenty-third is a state holiday, yes?
Yeah, twenty-third is state holiday. I have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Holiday schedule is set for the county. Okay. Mr. Bower, do you have anything other?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I could and if you all would not mind, what you, I handed out to you a draft ordinance two thousand seventeen that the county attorney has prepared. The request is for you to set a public hearing for the January tenth Board Supervisors meeting. Mr. Morris has been working with us, or was working with the Planning Commission back for several months. Came in, on the back of this, you will see a map of a right-of-way that they are proposing as the old Tenth Street and Carter, Virginia Avenue. When they first came in and we looked at it, we said, you really got to go get a flat repaired so we can understand everything you're wanting to vacate. I've laid some colored maps there that you all can look at. Basically, the Morris family has maintained this for sixty years. Mr. Morris's house is actually in the middle of the Hill Street right-of-way. His brother-in-law, which is on the front part of this lots fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen and to the north there, have a outbuilding that's in the middle of this old right-of-way. They really were not aware that it was even a paper-matted right-of-way until this came up and they came in to talk to us. They have made the request to have this vacated. The county attorney has reviewed it. And they do have a letter that they submitted, but it's also signed by Douglas and Judy Swecker, who lives to the north beside of them, Triva Pickett, who owns land to the northeast of them there, and Barry Dickens, who owns land to the west of them there. So, they are all interested in doing it. They understand we have set a public hearing. We will be notifying all the joining landowners anyway of this proposed vacation. Request just for you all to set a public hearing for seven oh five P.M. on January tenth.
Should we set a little later than that?
Seven fifteen, whatever you want.
Because it'd be our first organization.
And we'll be organized, that's correct.
Everybody that joined this is going to be notified with a letter?
Yes, sir.
I like the motion. You said the public hearing?
Seven fif, uh, seven thirty.
Whatever time it's set.
Seven thirty. Okay, I have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, set, set a public hearing for the first meeting in whatever, January tenth, twenty-seventeenth at seven thirty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. See, may any other board member have anything else to bring up tonight?
Yeah, I'd like to take on Dr. Prosser's extension, Mr. Vaughn's here. Steven, having that changed. What's progress on getting the sewer plant real fixed?
Sewer plant roof fixed? Do you want to tell, basically, last I spoke with Mr. Crisp about it and Mr. Bowers about it, Mr. Crisp had prepared its preliminary specs. Mr. Bowers had gone through, met with him, was updating those specifications to get it updated in order to get it out for proposal.
Same report we got the last time. Can we get a target date?
Yes, sir.
You make it, spend three years. The other one, where are we with getting that shower to seal?
Philly is, knowing from any purchase of material, the budget you've already given to them for the, for the shower, raise the shower and put it in with the understanding that for emergency or interwoven use only, because the building's sewage permitted on the old house that was there basically was the one hole of dream they have. And that's, that's the correspondence we've had with the people at the rescue squad.
The usage of the water was the problem before, that it could not go into the current septic system. After reviewing the last year's usage of the water and resolving their problem, and it primarily came from, one, the mound being washed, but also from a leaky toilet in there. The volume is such that it could go into the existing septic system as long as they are using it for emergency purposes. The concern is if they go to twenty-four-hour shifts and a lot of people been there and using it, they could have an issue. But it could go into the existing septic system as is, and Mr. Bowers was purchasing the material and equipment to at least get ready for the installation.
Mr. Reeves brought up something out of last discussion about this. It's now, I don't know whether Mr. Vaughn had read. Can we put asphalt curb along the lower edge of parking lot so water can't go off the paved parking lot and go into drain field? The way it is right now, water coming off the pavement goes right into drain field. And that might have been what floated that drain field last time because we had several weeks of continuous rain. Once those chamber ditches fill up, they've done all they can do. And if it's with surface water, it sort of gets mixed.
Yeah, you're right. It took weeks of rain to do that. The soil there doesn't perk at all. So, in a normal operation, probably just going to flow off the top anyway. But anything we can do to curb the water from the drain field will be of help of some sort.
Do you think we've got enough money already appropriated to put a false curb, just a mound of three inches, four inches high, along the lower side of that pavement? And it will reduce the contributory area that we use all the time in stormwater management and possibly look at extending some pipage to get the water off the building to not go into drain field.
Anything will help. Thinking about two-inch curb, of course, plants have gotten shut down. But, yeah, we've been looking to do that. It should just drain right to the street, front road. The way you're talking, the way that land is right there. And the roof leaders, where they discharge on the inward side of the curb and propose it.
I think if you take care of that, I don't think there'll be another problem with the land, the septic, the field lines down there.
Mr. Vaughn, let's look at, let's just say the plants shut down with this closing. With a couple of tubes and sixes and a little bit of ingenuity, we can pour that and put a concrete curb there. Put a couple of dowels into that asphalt and it don't have to wait till the plants are back up and able, we can get done.
Can you, can you just buy those little five-inch or four-inch concrete curb fixes?
Yeah, the bumper blocks, we could put those there, but, you know, you need to.
I mean, just seal them under.
Some kind of stealer to keep the water from blowing under. But I don't think that it's a dripping type thing. I think it's the big rain, like we have the bore, it's running right off in that drain field.
That's what I'm saying. It would hit those in the burbs. It's not, it's not what would sink under it.
Quite often, common sense solutions are economical things.
Yeah, I, I know. It kind of worried me when you were talking stormwater management that actually makes sense. I, I don't know how anybody handled that. You've got to work at it.
But we, where we are is we were proceeding with going to the existing septic system. There are still concerns about overuse. And we've, we've talked to Mr. Alley and Mr. Inga that's left now. We talked to them about that in the process of understanding the purpose and use of that shower. It would be a management responsibility for them to do it or they're going to put us into more problems than what we've got.
Steven, a year plus ago, I think we looked for a budget, probably Mr. Vaughn went to length and actually looked to put in a drain water system. And I think we approved money for it.
We have approved five thousand dollars.
No, I'm talking about currently. I'm talking about last year's budget.
The money was not in the budget. You're right. We did look at it. It was discussed.
We gave it to the project. I thought the board voted to do it. And Bill, you, this is not a very big thing for you, but it's pretty big thing for the rescue squad. You picked out a model of a tank. I debated, we actually needed a tank, it needed dry well.
I mean, if you're saying you want to go that route, Mr. Vaughn, we will go that route.
No, 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 no. I'm not saying we don't want to go that route, Steve.
We went that route because the water usage was such that we were looking at going to the other system because we said we can't go into the current septic system. We reviewed the current usage. We looked at the permit on how much water was permitted for that septic system for the residential use and determined that it could go into this system. That can be done quicker and faster and less expense to go ahead and do that. And that is the process in which we were trying to proceed to get that done as quickly as possible.
I think it's a good move. I don't think we have any shower police, so we don't have to worry about the place somebody takes a shower.
We just watch it for management of the water usage. Like, somebody will.
If the water goes up, or if the problem reoccurs, if we believe, and I think Mr. Vaughn will agree, the surface water was probably the primary problem for it. There's no doubt in my mind that those chambers can take the amount of water that they were buying down there. But when you add the stormwater and the area that contributes into the drain field, it overwhelms the drain field. Not the shower, but, you know, the water coming off the parking lot.
Uh, I'll give a little update. I did meet with Senator Kerry Coe on the fifth of December. We had a good meeting. We had lunch, met for about two, two and a half hours. He is going to put in the bill on the Senate side for the cigarette tax. And Mr. Camel, he put it in that day. And Jeff Camel, the House of Democrats, has put it in too. So, it's in both sides of the House and the General Assembly. And we also talked about the House Bill five fifty-eight, which passed last year. I don't know why. The Health Department brought it up to us, of which it passed the General Assembly last year with, with no question. Nobody questioned the bill or anything. So, the bill is passed. I don't know what we can do about having, having it changed. I didn't know nothing about it last year. It wasn't mentioned in VACO, it wasn't mentioned in the Environmental Committee that I chaired last year. So, when they brought it up, that's the first I heard of the House Bill five fifty-eight. Did talk to him about a couple more things, putting the bill in to clarify our corridor on our mixed beverage corridor. It doesn't have clear language in the code section that, that covers that about where they actually measured the fifteen hundred feet from. I think the ABC people won't measure from the middle of the interstate in which we're wanting them to measure from the access road right-of-way, fifteen foot back. And that will be put in. And I also talked to him about the moratorium on our BDOT CDs, which the governor was, he told me the governor was looking at it, so. But Steven, I think has some more information from BDOT.
Yeah, the Commonwealth Transportation Board met last week. And in general, in the previous years, they had done a moratorium and not repossessed any money from the counties that had similar type projects. Those were extended out to January of two thousand seventeen. There's a couple like ours that are coming due in January two thousand seventeen. The action proposed that, before the Commonwealth Transportation Board, and I've been talking with Matthew Cox, trying to get confirmation it was adopted as is, and I do believe it was, is that they are, instead of taking one hundred percent of the funds from January of two thousand seventeen of the bonded amount of your project, they will start drawing twenty percent of the funds the first year, then draw twenty percent the next year, twenty percent the following year. So, for our project, that means that we do not have a qualifying investment in there. We're at about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that the state would claim back out of their, the amount that they provided to us to construct that way.
Yes, I think so. You can discuss that probably at the Department of Federality Committee meeting.
Well, I'd like to ask one question. Are we still looking into other, aggressively looking into other remedies?
Opposed to legislation?
Other remedies that are, all right, I would suppose. I would oppose to giving highway park any money back because we're never going to get it back.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Okay. Do you may also have anything for the board tonight?
Are you guys going to meet in between Christmas? There is a meeting scheduled for that Tuesday. Are you going to do it or?
December twenty-seventh, yeah. I, Christmas. Okay. Anything else? Here none? Fire's adjourned.